We come to an agreement, Mayor Reed finally conceded today because of the comment that Mayor Reed, we agreed that we would do, we would do a separate ballot for the city of Atlanta, where the city of Atlanta could have a 50-50 split in the city of Atlanta, let them do their own split, we were fine with that. But then Mayor Reed's comment today was, I will solve for nothing less than a 50-50 split countywide. So I asked him to clarify that before we left the meeting today, and he finally said he was gonna get with his people and get back with us. So, I think he's kinda seeing the direction of where it's going. So, anyway.
So he's mayor of the county?
Well, it's interesting. The interesting thing with Atlanta is, Mayor Reed's very quick to say, I represent 42 percent, I mean Atlanta, I represent 42 percent of the population of Fulton County, you guys aren't gonna tell me what to do, but I represent 42 percent of the population of Fulton County, so I won't tell you what you're gonna do. So, I, it's, it's very frustrating to me. So, we will see if we can't find some common ground there for it. But trying to get 14 cities to agree on something, good luck with that. So, anyway, sorry for all the confusion, I hope I clarified that as best I could. It's been a very, very complicated process. Alright, so now we'll move into new business. We have the first reading of ordinance 2016-03, February 2nd, 2016, council adopted ordinance redefining the term pool halls and building rooms in the arts overlay district for the city. For equity purposes, the city council asked after prior consideration the ordinance that would expand the new definitions into additional commercial areas of the city. So, the attached ordinance in your packet is first reading, so if y'all have any comments or recommendations for modifications, please let William know, so we can work on that. Any comments? I'm taking action on this, so this will serve as first reading of 2016-03. Next item is 2016-04, the blighted property tax. Last year, staff presented the context of a blight tax to, presented the concept of a blight tax to be developed and adopted for the city of Hayville, as a tool to encourage property owners to clean up and better maintain their property. City of College Park already has such an ordinance, the basic public policy being proposed here is to penalize properties that are not in compliance with our codes with additional property taxes. This is logical, as such properties take additional city time and resources to serve. And one of the things that we've run into with this is when we reach the abatement process, when the city has to take, take charge of the property, clean it up, it costs us money. It costs us money to do that. And it's a long process to get us to abatement, and then so many times we get to abatement and we, we can't afford a $250,000 abatement process. So, by identifying this revenue and the seven mils that was mentioned earlier, that's high, yes, it's high, and it's high by design. It's high to send a message to the property owners that if you're not gonna keep your property up, there's a penalty, there's a prospector.
One of the things we're finding is that with the absentee landlords, the only way to get their attention is to hit them in the wallet. And College Park passed this, been using it with some success, and in the presentations made to council last year, you indicated a willingness to consider this, so that's why we're bringing it forward for you.
Steve, how's it, what kind of success does College Park have with this?
It's only as good as the staff follows through.
Okay. Alright, that's a good heads up. Alright, any questions on this?
I have a few questions on this. I don't know if it'll go to Bill or Steve. Who would be the one that's in charge of this? You know, puts one person in charge, who would it be? Like, would it be code enforcement? Would it be?
Code enforcement.
Okay. So code enforcement would be the one in charge of it? And it said that you had to have five complaints to a property to start the process? Can you start it without those five complaints?
Yes. Yes, we can, as staff, we can identify. It says either/or.
Okay, so it's five complaints or, okay. And is it like five consecutive complaints, or is it just five complaints over?
There's five complaints in the area, this is how I read it.
Okay. Cause it doesn't say like within six months, or within, okay. And then, one of my other questions was, when they clean up the property, it says they give a negative tax of .5? What is that? Like, how, how does that work?
Well, they get, they get a credit back, basically. So there's an end goal there.
Actually, you pay, pay seven mils extra, as long as you're blighted. These are just recommended numbers, by the way. The way it's drafted, you would pay seven mils, and once you declare blighted, you're seven mils until you're unblighted, there's a process for that. Once you get to be unblighted, you get a five mil tax rebate, you get a five mil tax credit.
So you're basically up seven, down five? So in that increase of two, for, even after you're cleaned up, or you're up to seven, you're back to zero, and then you're down two?
Seven goes back to normal.
Okay.
Then you give five credit.
Five credit.
That's to encourage people to go out there and clean it up, maybe give them some of their money back.
Okay.
But they had to pay while they were blighted. But the purpose of the ordinance is to motivate, not really to collect while they...
We have, we have to put it in a trust fund, and we have to earmark it for, you know, dealing with these issues, and we're prepared to move forward with, you know, the details of that, should you all want us to proceed with this.
So, once you're on the blighted tax property, you are assessed seven mils by Fulton County, so I guess, who would talk to Fulton County? Would it be?
No, we'd assess it locally.
We'd assess it locally?
We'd say, cause we'd say that our own tax.
Okay, so we'd assess it locally, every year, and then once they're off, for that one year, they get the five mil credit, or is it like consecutive? If they're on for five years, do they get five years of that?
They get some.
Five mil break?
No, there's a, there's a formula that's a function of how much they spend on rehab.
Okay.
It depends on how much the cost.
Okay, with every $25,000, a portion thereof, equaling one year of tax reductions.
Right.
Okay. Okay. And is this on, like, this is where my question is. I still, I've been on council for two years, and I'm not quite exactly sure where grandfathering falls in. Like, all properties would be the blighted tax, there's no grandfathering blight.
No.
Okay. So, there's no grandfathering blight. When we go and we're, I'm going somewhere with this. So, so, but with the extended stay ordinance, does that affect everybody? Does that affect all extended stay properties in Hayville?
No, that's for the new, this is, this sets the standard for new development.
So they're, whatever's grandfather, whatever's there is grandfather.
Correct.
What's the difference?
Well, okay, let's just take in-city suites.
Yeah.
Okay, that is an existing structure.
A blighted house?
Unless they tear it down, then, and build new, it could stay like it is.
But what's, yeah, clarify that.
The simple equation, grandfathering is, if you were legal, and then we changed the law, you could continue to do what you were doing, until you stop. That's grandfathering.
Okay. But what's the difference? We can't, blight is not legal.
Blight's never, blight is never legal.
You can't grandfather it.
So, okay, so it's never legal, that's why it can't be grandfathered.
Right.
Okay.
I have one more question too about this. The .5, that means half of the mileage rate, we would return half of what our rate is, is what we would return?
No, those are just placeholders, you should, you should put your own numbers in there.
Any other questions on this?
I like the fact that it's not to make money, it's to make improvements, and that should be our goal.
But if you have somebody that's not gonna be in compliance?
Then we'll make some.
Then, then we'll have somebody to help clean the mess up.
I love football, so I'll use a football analogy, it's like the referee throwing the penalty flag, and this is a big one, it's a 15-yard penalty.
And then, commercial properties. So, three months of no action in a commercial property? What, cause it says three month, I can't find it in here right now. But, where no visible commercial activity has occurred for the last three months, so does that mean where the property's chained or gated from public access for the last three months? Or there's an accumulation of weeds? So, if a property's chained for three months, that would be considered blight?
That one's a little different, because you notice the last sentence says that, that standard establishes a rebuttable presumption.
English?
So that means, that means that the property owner could come in and say, no, you're wrong about the assumptions that you made.
Okay, okay. So that like, oh, this, we're just fixing it up?
But it just establishes a standard in the law, so we, you know, know where the tripwire is, and then we can have that argument.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Might be more.
Alright, that's all the questions I have.
It makes it easier for staff to, you know, if there's some threshold, if there's some standard there, we can start there at that conversation point.
Okay. Do we have a list, like, of what we're gonna hit as soon as this thing passes?
Well, we know of one property right now in the city, there's, there's likely to be more.
Okay.
We just have to make sure, if the ordinance is passed, that all those properties fit within the ordinance.
Okay.
In a blighted condition. Some of our abavements are things for grass, or they might be just for paint, but by the definitions in our, in the proposed ordinance, those would not fit into that, that particular criteria.
We're not gonna call it a hit list, are we?
It is not a hit list, it is properties that meet the criteria of the statute.
That sounds a little...
And it can't be, properties that are currently lived in, right? This is vacant or abandoned properties.
You are right.
Okay. So I can't just go up to my house and knock on my door and say, hey?
Hi.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Alright. Alright, so this gives us an opportunity, considering the discussion, to look over this more carefully, and see if we've got any other questions or comments to find. So, we'll, the standard has been a first reading, 2016-04.
So does this have to be advertised? Does this go to a public hearing? Okay, cause I don't see that in here, I see that the bill you're talking about is...
Oh, this one? No, this, this one doesn't.
It's not a zoning, the other one's a zoning.
Oh, okay, alright.
Alright, alright.
We had several on here that did have to go to public hearing, so I missed that.
Okay, and, and earlier, of course, we, we've already had a little bit of discussion during the citizen comments regarding 2016-05, this is the extended stay hotels ordinance. So, after, after the comments and questions that were made, I think we probably, as council, need to look over that, see, see what other comments or questions we would like to email the staff for follow-up on. So, if you would email William, any concerns or questions or additions or changes that you would like to see, cause we definitely wanna create something that's going to be business-friendly, of course, and protect the integrity of our neighborhoods. It never has been the intention with the rezonies that were done, we realize we've got certain areas that need dense development, if we're going to be, Hayville's two and a half square miles, we're landlocked, we, we have to grow wisely, but we never have intended, nor, nor do we intend, that I'm aware of, destroying the integrity of our existing neighborhoods. So, we gotta keep that balanced, while we're looking at things like this.
Was there, would you like for Bill to address that issue, because I don't think he was definitely...
Do you have some comments you'd like to make, Bill?
Sure.
And my question is, like, was there a reason why they were just put in the RMU and the UV?
Density.
They're already in the RMU, that's gotta change the ordinance. Recall, we recently adopted ordinance amendment to the RMU to include hotels permitted use. Extended stay in Hayville goes back about 20 years, I think Steve worked on regulations. What's in the ordinance currently is that 480 square feet, additional bedroom, another 150 square feet, and that's what's in the RMU for the definition of hotel. I don't know if the memo is probably 15 years old, it went to Lee Sudditt on this, it has some of the same standards we've recommended today, and there are some other standards in there that were gleaned from a case in College Park. The original zoning had C2, extended stay, which is defined as a room with cooking facilities, that had to be 480 square feet, that's how the state bridge came in, and I imagine that's how residents in and courtyard came in, although I'm not certain of that. So the baseline was the C2. Surprisingly, the CR zone, which flanks neighborhoods on Dogwood and on North Central, allows extended stay hotels currently. My feeling was that that was an inappropriate use when it was flanking residential. So the RMU already has that, that right, you can do an extended stay as long as you comply with the 480 square feet floor area. And if, the logic I follow was that if council adopted that for the RMU, then why not for the UV? So if it's not an RMU, then it doesn't need to be in UV, but in my opinion, it should definitely not be a use in the CR zone. And you can identify any use that's not permitted or prohibited, and is subject to processing by the building official, which happens to be immediate moment. And it's judged to be a use that's akin to uses that are permitted, that it could be approved by that building official. I don't relish that role, I think it's a final zoning decision that shouldn't be delegated to staff, but that's a whole nother topic. So that, that's the plan, that's the proposal. Take it off the CR, because it flanks residential, leave it alone in the C2, if you add it in RMU, which you do, then it's illogical not to have it in the UV. Most of the UV is away from residential. Are there any questions on that? Give the comments.
I think the comment that Mr. Patel made is, is very true, that the original purpose of an extended stay was a couple of weeks, not to become somebody's residence. So, we, what we're, what we're trying to accomplish here around the Beltway, is to, is to keep the quality bar very, very high, and open as few doors as possible for, because, Steve said this himself several times, it's, it's not what you put on the ground today, but it's what happens to that 10 years from now, that you wanna be concerned about. And if you maintain the standards high from the beginning, you're gonna minimize the creation of, of property that becomes people's primary residence, which it was never designed, that was never designed to be that way.
Correct. Does extended stay pay head tax?
I imagine.
I didn't hear that.
Hotel motel tax?
Yes.
They do? Okay.
Yes. Yeah, I, I think there's a time limit on it, but I, I know that we do get a check, I don't know how much it is.
Up to, I forget.
About 30 days.
30 days.
After that.
Like, I ask for the first 30 days, so, okay.
Yeah, it's also worth something.
Yeah, and then ballpark.
I think a bunch of this is market. You know, the market on Old National is a lot different than the market on International Boulevard, is, is a lot different than the market on North Central. In my mind, in, in town, city suites, whatever it is at the moment, it's not as good a market as was marketed, not as good a market as our locations over here, that have been successful for decades. The Residence Center courtyard's been on the ground for at least 20 years.
And we haven't had the kind of problems over there that we're talking about. Any other questions for Bill? Again, consider the comments that were made, designing the, the television size, et cetera, et cetera, consider that, and, and again, please funnel your comments or questions or concerns to William, so he can funnel them back to staff, so we can, if we come back with any major, we'll do another first reading, if we make substantive changes. I prefer to do that with something like this, if they're minor changes, we can pass it to the next meeting.
For me, the number of rooms seems to not work mathematically for the properties, for the height, for the size of rooms, I don't, I think that's a very strong point that was made in the comments, that we need to look at. I think 100 would be plenty, and I, I don't know, you'd have to just work out all the math and all the adjacent things that are required, it's like in the restaurant, you don't just have to have a refrigerator, there's everything that comes along with it to make it all work as a whole. And so with the motel, it's gotta be the same way. I, I worked at Marriott Marquis and at the Hilton downtown, I'm very familiar with how that works in apartments, so to require so many rooms and yet so much space and only four floors, I think it's getting a little difficult.
Good point. Okay. Alright, well, that being said, that will serve as first reading, your ordinance 2016-05. Next item, and of course, we've had some discussion earlier, we, we had nothing on for action tonight on the alcohol code amendments. I think based upon the citizen comments, the comments from some of our businesses that are license holders, and some of the discussion that we've, we've had amongst ourselves, my thought, and this is up to you guys, but my thought is, is we might, we might look at some quick fixes for the immediate, and, because I don't, I think we're probably looking at 60 to 90 days, that amount of money, before we can do a rewrite, and that would, but this, I mean, it's getting, corporate, corporate folks wanna have parties and stuff in the spring, and so, we're, we're approaching spring, so it, and this is, this is something we can talk about, Steve, from a legal standpoint, but if there's a, if there's a one liner, my point is, I don't wanna spend, I don't wanna spend $3,000 of taxpayer money, plug in holes in this dam, and then turn around having to build a new dam, is what I'm saying. So, if we can plug the holes reasonably, inexpensively, and then come back and look at the rewrite down the road, then I, that, that's kind of what I meant earlier by a hybrid approach to this.
Of course, typically, we do these things, analogize to surgery, but I can use a Band-Aid, which is something like, notwithstanding any other provision of the code, following is allowed, I don't know what kind of unintended consequences it might come with that.
Right.
But we're only looking at that for two, three, four months.
Right.
That's, that's pretty, down, there are some fix.
Right.
But there's some risk of it.
Understood.
Yeah, the issue is, we, we just finished defending ourselves with the equal bequeath club issue, and the chief has concerns about those kinds of, of issues, and so that's where we were kinda stuck with, you know, we needed direction from council as to what to do. And it's not as simple as just sticking in a sentence, I mean, it could, but it, it...
That takes care of the legal aspect of it, but not...
But then there's an equity and fairness issue and other issues, so...
Well, in fairness, wouldn't it still be the same closing time and no noise? The noise problems all still would apply, even with adding census.
Yeah, I think we could make some restrictions to it, and maybe, you know, have it come through some sort of special permit process or something, but I don't know, I mean, let's put us our bets together and figure it out.
I don't know if they should get a special permit every time they go to have a party, and I might get a little cumbersome, I, I don't know on the events you would expect, but...
And I know the social club never went to us for permitting, you know, any parties that they had.
Their business plans.
Right, so, and I think that's one of the main differences, it was a social club, and this is a, is a, is a business, and it is not a private club, so I think that's a, a big difference, and, and I don't know that I think that I would want the, them to have to come to us with a permit, I mean, it's not like the, you know, Happy Days, and they're gonna serve in the park, this is in their own facility, and I think we've said that the, the noise ordinance and all of that still applies, so...
But, but, but then again, you get into the legal aspect of, or the moral dilemma, if you will, of, we, we tell other businesses they can't give away alcohol, but now you wanna, you wanna set aside a class that it is okay to give alcohol in. Those are the kinds of things we need to think beyond just the sentence and ordinance, and I'm not criticizing, I'm not, but you understand what I'm saying.
Right.
I, I just think that's, I'm not being narrow-minded when I say that, but I'm saying there, I've seen in my 18 years on being involved in local government, unanticipated consequences that you could never dream of when you passed a piece of legislation, so I, I just want us to think through that. And, and if we, if we can, if we can bifurcate a group, and, and our attorney's not concerned about equal, equal treatment under the law, then I'm, I'm good with that, so.
So, is it basically just the only issue that we want to do?
I think, I think that the, the situation for Archer's Brewery is one issue, the other issue is what was brought up by, by the beer girl, but when you get into, when you get into breaking up, breaking up six-packs, we went through a lot of issues back in the day when we wrote this ordinance, hold on, when we wrote the original ordinance with Gap, because, in fact, one of my colleagues downtown today at the meeting said they're considering not letting, gas stations like convenience stores sell beer, period, because they got so many people drinking on the sidewalks, and we, we eliminated the single sales to avoid the portability of taking alcohol right out the door, putting it in a bag, walking down the street, then you got littering problems and all that, so. Eric? Have you got a summary of what you're looking for in writings you can, that you can email?
Well, I thought Alexia wrote something, and I know that you have it.
Okay. It's probably in the back, I, I didn't write my printed pages tonight, so.
I didn't distribute it, I just...
That's okay.
Addressing of the breaking of package and such, the current ordinance is circumvented already by the way that stores can purchase here, they, you know, typically, when that ordinance was written, you had only the option of buying in six-packs.
Right.
Now, I could buy things that, you know, some of the lower-end beers that we don't typically carry, but we have, we could buy them as 24 singles, which would effectively circumvent the law, which is what you're seeing, is how convenience stores are able to do that now. The other prohibition that's already in place is putting beer in an ice chest, ready to grab all the way out. We are in no way asking for that, we have no desire to circumvent any law. If you'll take a look at what we're proposing, it is a direct drop-in to the ordinance that is already in place, and I think the question, you know, and it has been thoroughly researched, it's in, it's in the spirit of places like Avondale, Brookhaven, Stockbridge, Johns Creek, Alpharetta, places that are more, have been more at the cutting edge of their alcohol laws, as far as defining what's available under what the state law allows, and how the city ordinances define that. What we're, nothing that we're proposing circumvents anything, and I would be surprised that any legal mind looking at it from the perspective of unintended consequences, would not recognize the protections that are in place, and the respect and diligence given to existing city ordinances and the spirit of those ordinances. So, I think we produced the Growler ordinance that was accepted, we have no intention of proposing anything that is not following the spirit and intent, while at the same time promoting Hayville.
Absolutely.
And allowing more business to wanna be in Hayville, and more people to wanna come to Hayville. So, you're absolutely right, when you look at how packages were being broken and such in the past, 100% correct. However, circumvent has, circumventions have already occurred for that, and I'm not sure that your current language, other than the no ice chest with, with beer singles, is doing what you, what, what you expected to do now, from, I think you said 15 years ago, it's not the same protection that it was, and what we're talking about is limited release specialty beers, you know, you're not going to find a 99-cent beer at your counter to take out from our shop. Thank you.
And Mr. Beer, your concern was only the, the private party situation?
Well, I, I think, I sent an email kind of with outlining all this stuff...
Well, I, I think, I sent an email kind of with outlining all the stuff that breweries can do under Georgia law. We, we would like to do all those things. When we came into Hayville, we ran the impression that we could do all those things. And so we, but I think the only thing that came up that was, that would stop us from doing one of the, one of those things was the, in the special events arena.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted to circle back, make sure.
Yeah, yeah, unintended consequences, I agree. I mean, we are highly regulated, and you guys, we have to get a new license every year from you guys.
Right.
If there's any unintended consequences, you can cut us off at the legs within a year. I don't think it's ever gonna happen. Fairness aspect too, I was thinking about it. We're the only, one of the only businesses that's, that's gonna be regulated by three different federal, state, and local. And if any other business wants to go through that same kind of process, you can go ahead and do that, and then you talk to them about fairness, so.
Understood.
That's why I put it in there.
Boy, thank, and I think, I, I've been in some discussions with Eric. And I think their business has changed. You know, when they first opened Beer Girl, it was only Growlers everywhere. No one could ever sell pints. But now, you've seen a business model changing and evolving really quickly. Because I think the first time we talked about it was maybe three months ago. And it was only like in two cities that they could do it. And I think now, how many cities can they do it in? It's.
It's over six.
Yeah.
It may be more than that. But it, it is.
So it's.
The motto, you're right, the motto is evolving. Business, business is adapting and changing. And this is a, this is something. We, we, we're happy to be in Hayville. We're glad to be in Hayville. And, but, but, but much like the brewery, you know, we, we get constant requests for doing special events. That's not a possibility for us now. Again, there's language that we propose that allows that. That's a simple drop-in to the current ordinance. And I would be surprised that, like I said before, I'd be surprised that anyone could infer any unintended consequences from what we propose. And as Josh says, you know, six municipalities plus now are allowing this. It's fully allowable under state law. And we wanna keep up. And we don't want people going down the road to Stockbridge. We don't want people, people going elsewhere. We want people coming to Hayville. We are a business that is entirely minded about Hayville in particular and the sub-tri-cities in general. We want to be a good neighbor and pull in at any of our neighbors and keep them in this area.
Awesome.
What is the closing town presently for businesses there above the neighborhoods?
Midnight.
Midnight? Does that cause a problem? A closing town of midnight?
For Archer?
Yes.
I can't see it.
Beer Girl?
Uh, I don't think.
He doesn't. Oh, he doesn't, okay.
It doesn't, because I have no intention of being at one in the morning. But I don't think it would.
The only thing I can see if someone has a New Year's Eve party, that's, you know, midnight kind of time.